I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, united, in the name of our liberty and justice for all. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meeting of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Cedar Grove Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be advertised by having the date, time, and place thereof posted on bulletin boards in the district, published and/or transmitted to the Verona Cedar Grove Times and the Star Ledger newspaper, tapped into online news, filed with the township clerk, and posted on the district website. Could I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Grande.
Here.
Mrs. Gigan.
Here.
Mr. Palaik.
Present.
Mr. Marzullo.
Here.
Ms. Dora.
Here. Okay, at this point it is open to public comment. Is there anybody that would like to speak for public comment tonight? Anything on the agenda? Come on up. The Board of Education recognizes the value of public comment on educational issues and the importance of allowing members of the public to express themselves on school matters of the community interest. Public participation shall be governed by the following rules: Please preface comments by stating your name, address, municipality of residence, and/or group affiliation. Please be mindful of your statement length and keep each statement to the three-minute limit. Participants may not speak more than once on the same topic until others who wish to speak on the topic have been heard. Please direct all statements, questions, and inquiries to the presiding officer, and any questions or inquiries directed by a participant to another board member shall be redirected to the presiding officer. The presiding officer may interrupt, warn, and/or terminate a participant's statement, question, or inquiry if it's too lengthy, or is abusive, obscene, and/or maybe defamatory. These rules may be waived if necessary to protect privacy or to maintain an orderly operation of the meeting.
Okay, I think I'll be good. All right. Leo Stringer for Hy-Vee Terrace in Cedar Grove. I wanted to bring up, last week we had the special meeting regarding LRP schools and possible enhancements, and my question today is, on the agenda, there's two things, two options, nine and 10. What I come out to be, adds up to me to be about $64,000, is that we're doing a study on architectural services and also on flooding, stormwater drain loss, but we haven't even decided if we're doing these enhancements yet. So that's a lot of money, that's $64,000. I don't know if Mr. Grasso is going to speak on the details of this, because what I've also seen with past meetings unfortunately is that we don't talk about details. We kind of just go through the resolutions and you guys say yes or no, and nobody gets to hear anything unless we read the agenda. So that's the question.
Okay, I can answer that, Mr. Stringer.
Okay, thank you.
So if you have attended the last several board meetings, I would think you would be seeing a change in the way we present our information to the community, and there has been a lot more discussion on the big-ticket items on the board agenda. The second part of your question, yes, there is a plan to discuss those specifically as when we get to that portion of the resolution. If you'd like, I can, we can do it now, or we can do it when we do the resolution.
Okay, as long as we do it, it would be appropriate, because I know, yeah, we're still, I have, I've only missed one meeting, so I have, know that we have been glossing over a lot of the discussion, so it's, that's what I'm seeing as a resident. I'm not seeing any detailed discussion.
It's unfortunate that you see it as glossing over. I don't think we agree with that, but we certainly will take your comments.
Okay.
And thank you.
In the last meeting, we didn't, wasn't televised, so I didn't know what they, what you talked about at that one. Okay. Also, I'd say, yeah, $30,000 for asbestos removal, for a boiler replacement at high school. So that's, these seem like high-ticket items to me. Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome. Anybody else for this portion? Okay, we closed that portion of the meeting. So we are gonna move to some committee report. We're gonna start Mr. Wilson today. Good evening, Mr. Wilson, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Doing very well, thank you.
Hi. Hello, everybody, I'm Ian Wilson, and I'm...
Mr. DeVita, could you give me your mic, please?
Sorry, again, my bad. Hello, I am Ian Wilson, and I am the president of All School Council at Cedar Grove High School, and I am the All School Council Student Liaison to the Board of Ed. I wasn't here last time because I was, it was February 28th, I think, and it was the middle of tech week for the prom, so that happened, and that was really good. Lots of ticket sales, and I think a good reception from the community. It was a really fun show to put on from somebody who was in it, and I think it was a really good thing for our community because a lot of people responded to that show very well. Also, our latest event in All School Council, I did mention this, I think my last meeting I was here, was our homeless donations drive to the Coalition for the Homeless. We ran that actually through March 1st, and we got 142 care packages for the Coalition for the Homeless, so that was a successful drive, and... And that was, that felt really good because we were struggling a little bit with involvement, and I was nervous that it was just not gonna work, and nothing was gonna work anymore, but that worked, and I think that it was really important that something like that worked also, because that's a really important cause. And actually, this weekend, we're going to transport those donations, I think Saturday. We haven't set an exact time, but yeah. Looking to the future, our next big thing is the color run, which I think is supposed to be April 23rd, it's supposed to be April 23rd, not "I think," but we are a little behind on promoting that, so I'm gonna use this as a platform to say right now that for anybody in the community, we are doing a 5K at the high school, a color run, in which proceeds will go partially to our high school and partially to a cause. Because we are, ever since COVID and like lack of student involvement, we have been running out of class money, so it is important that there's a lot of involvement in this color run. More details will be posted soon. We're gonna have posters around town within the week, but we are a little bit behind on promoting it, and my fault a little bit, but, but...
You're a little busy.
Yeah. And that's basically where we're at with All School Council. Spring sports are starting soon, though, so one season ends, one season starts, so we're entering the kind of that last part of the year, which is crazy, but we're here. So yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
(applause)
I will say, there's one thing I disagree with you. You said that the prom was pretty good. The prom was excellent. It was amazing. You and the cast did a phenomenal job, so I want to commend you all on that. Everybody, I hope you're listening at home. If you missed it, you missed something pretty special, but it was very enjoyable. I went a couple times myself, and it was just, was better each time, so well done. I also want to make a comment, I know you have spoken several times about the challenges that the All Student Council has been having this year with getting involvement, and I feel like we're starting to see a little bit of a switch with that, so I commend you and your fellow council members on the amount of work and persistence, right, perseverance. That's what we try to teach our kids, to be resilient and persevere through challenging times. So you all have done an amazing job, so it's really nice to see that start to turn around. I hope they have somebody lined up to follow in your footsteps as you are graduating this year, so thank you for all your effort. I really do appreciate it, we all do.
Thank you, Ian. We'd be remiss if we did not acknowledge, you know, the outstanding performance that you personally have done in that play. You were really very, very good, as was your entire cast.
And funny.
And as Ms. Dora said, it was excellent. It really was.
It was great. It was. Even with the stage thing that fell over, the way they respond it, yes. Everyone went a-running, and you know, it was great.
That was interesting.
That was great. Resiliency, that's what we teach, so well done, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome to stay, if you'd like. I know you have a lot of children, I know that. I have two at home, I get it. So, thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Color run, don't forget the color run.
Don't forget the color. Thank you.
Have a good one.
Yes. Okay. Mr. Marzullo, do you have any committee reports? I know we just met, so...
We just met. I did attend a personnel meeting with Mr. Palaik, which I'm gonna let him speak on behalf of, he's the lead on personnel. Facilities committee meeting we'll address during, I guess, during the agenda tonight with the referendum. I was one of those unfortunate ones that weren't able to attend the prom, and I did hear, it was spectacular, I was away at a hockey tournament that weekend. I had all intentions of going, but I want to congratulate those students that did participate in the production, this is a successful production of the prom. I also want to congratulate our winter athletes as the winter season closes. All the hockey teams, basketball, boys and girls basketball teams, wrestling teams did outstanding, very competitive in all realms, so congratulate to those winter athletes, and good luck to our spring athletes as we opened up this week, so...
Thursday.
Yep, Thursday, so good luck to everyone, and you know, look forward to the next committee report, so.
Thank you. Mr. Palaik?
Hey, thank you. We did not have a curriculum instruction meeting, I reported it on the last meeting. This is a short timeframe between meetings. We did have a personnel meeting, and in regards to personnel, it was many of the resolutions that you'll see before you today, no items which I would call high-stake, they're basically traditional business items that you would need to handle with personnel. There were several items that we did have to handle in executive session, but the meeting was very, very good, it was expedient, and taking care of business as presented to the board. Then, did have the opportunity to attend the FSA meeting at North End, they're always great meetings, they're well-attended. The FSA also Zooms their meetings, so it's a great combination of having parents personally at the meeting. We discussed a number of issues, most of them surrounding the referendum initiative, which we will talk about later in the evening. Second one was, as we will also explain, our goals, the importance of having board goals, and where we're moving with that. And the third one was some of the personnel decisions that we're making in this current budget to enhance where the district needs to be, and how we are gonna help support and supplement the goals that I'll talk about in a little bit in regards to moving forward with some personnel, some positions in the district. But it was an excellent meeting, and I thank the North End FSA for their turnout and their excellent questions. Excellent.
Thank you. Mrs. Gigan, do you have any committee reports?
No, I have no new committee reports. I know that South End FSA will have their next meeting, March 29th at 7:30, and they did start breaking ground with the playground, so that's well underway. There was a nice update from Mrs. DiMaggio the other night about the progress of that, so thankfully we didn't get a lot of snow, so that should continue. I think that's it for now. I also heard great things about the play.
Oh, it was fantastic.
And we have the District Arts Festival coming up, too.
Yes. Looking forward to it, that was a big hit last year. Looking forward to that.
Okay.
Mr. Grande, you're up.
Thanks. So the finance, I was part of the finance committee, we met last Thursday. Attendees were Paul, myself, Mr. Grasso, and Mr. DeVita. Really, the primary topic of discussion at that meeting was the 2023-2024 budget, which is being presented tonight for approval. In connection with the budget, we did note that New Jersey released our state aid, which came in a little bit, a little bit higher than expected, which is good news. You know, we reviewed various items, both in and outside of the, in and out of the budget in order just to make sure it balanced. We did note that the pilot funds are included in the budget, but a lot of that, you know, has been offset by items such as LRP not being rented out, there's more higher inflationary pressures on, you know, things, operating expenses and benefits, insurance, and things like that, so we did note that. I do also want to just mention that one of the things that we have been monitoring, and I've been in discussions with Mike a little bit on this, are the recent events with the Silicon Valley Bank, as well as Signature Bank, and the potential contagion effects to all the regional banks, you know, with those two banks specifically going, you know, going belly up. We want to make sure that our deposits are safe, and Mike did confirm with our banks and our bankers that we seem to be in good shape. Our banks have not really been affected, and even if they were, all of our deposits are fully insured, is my understanding, so that's good news, but one, something that we are monitoring, you know, as a district.
Thank you, Mr. Grande. Okay, before we move on, two meetings ago, the board, we presented our goals. We've heard us talking a lot about board goals and how they are lining to the overall operation of the district, and so we went through our goals several meetings ago to, you know, present them to the community. Unfortunately, at that meeting, we had some IT challenges, and most people did not hear them, so I had mentioned at our last meeting, which was focusing on the referendum, that we would be repeating them. So I'd like to take some time now to present to the community, we're all gonna present the five goals that we came up with, and we've done a lot of work behind the scenes on really trying to change the direction of the district and bring it together to be more cohesive. So we have five goals, and each of us will present the first one. Goal number one is about academic achievement, so I will let our, Mr. Palaik?
Great, thank you.
You're up first.
We should also recognize Ms. Dora for organizing this and getting it streamlined, and getting these goals into place, and I think you did a great job with that, Ms. Dora. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
When we talk about goals, I guess I'd like to give an overview, because I think it's very important to understand what the concept is to be behind these goals. When we present board goals tonight, we'll all talk about one, it is about setting the framework for the district, and more so, it's something that we as a board are gonna commit to, and we're gonna commit to it both through our support and promoting it, but more importantly, it's, when you have board goals, you're also financially supporting it, so these are initiatives that we truly believe in. The other thing with goals is that I think it's very important to understand, if you work with SMART goals in the private sector or whatever, these SMART goals are very specific to outcomes. I think that's the thing, is parents and people in the community is, you want to ask, well, what's the outcome gonna be? All right? And how long is it gonna take to get to that outcome, and what's the basis for it? And that's what we're gonna talk about, and when you create board goals, it then becomes the conduit whereby what, which the superintendent will create district goals. And from those district goals come building goals, and they should all have a connection to what you're attempting to do with your district. So the first is academics. The goal reads, "To promote and support the academic growth and achievement of all of our students utilizing information provided by standardized test scores, local benchmark assessments, and other relevant scholastic data." And one of the things I'd emphasize, this goal is about promoting growth, and those of you that are in the field of education will understand what that truly means. Growth is about taking all of our students and moving them to a new plateau. So if you have a student at three, the goal is to get them to five. If you have a group at five, you get them to seven. If you've got the kids that are at seven, you take them to nine. But the goal isn't to take every student and get them to the same spot, because what you want to do is work on where they are and continually move them. When you do that type of work as a school district, it really does emphasize and promulgate achievement. That's how you end up with positive achievement as a school district, by moving everyone. So it's important to understand that you must keep the ceiling high and not lower the floor. And by moving our students forward, we can do these types of things, and I think we're in a good place to do that. I will tell you that, you know, we have a lot of people doing a lot of work in this arena to try to get us there. You're gonna, what you're going to do is you're gonna begin to analyze your programs and your curriculums, but you're analyzing them against the data. The data tells you the direction that you need to go, and that's what we're looking at. I'll give you one example. If we took our standardized testing scores from September that were presented to us, our state scores, not gonna say the class or the grade or whatever, just to give you an idea of how the data should read, we had, on the math side of that grade level, we were down in the 35th percentile, only 35% of the students were proficient. However, in ELA, 77, 78% of students are proficient. Now, if you're an educator, you understand, then all of a sudden, that's not the students, that's programming, that's the approach to instruction, it could be what's being taught. There are a lot of factors in that, that determine that, so the data becomes very important. Another piece of data, we go to the high school level, we had 181 AP tests taken, but those were taken by only 107 students, 107 students took those tests. So you take them multiple tests, and so you're saying that we, in our high school population, and students that are taking multiple tests are part of that 107, we are now in a position whereby 40% of our population in an AP course hasn't even taken the test. So it's something you also have to look at, and see, those are the kinds of things that move your district forward. So the data, our benchmark assessments, we talked about it from our movement last time, LinkedIn, you're now gonna be able to track individual students and their benchmarks, where they are, and how they're progressing, or what areas of deficiency they are in, what standard they're not strong in, and they can work on that in particular classes. And what happens is, these types of things, your performance determines your future programming and your instruction. It's what takes you to where you need to go. So we're in a position as a board to support this, promote and foster an environment of really successful teaching and learning for all students at all levels, and we have to continually focus on that. But we need to analyze and understand what the data is telling us, and we have to provide financial support to help our district move in that direction, and also adjust all the appropriate staff issues, enhance our goals, give the teachers the appropriate tools. Our teachers do yeoman's work. They're working towards an end, and we need to provide them with scheduling, with the tools to take our children to that next level, and that is something that we need to look at and need to continually look at. This comes through strategic planning. We will strategically plan against our goals, and something to keep in mind is, my colleagues present their goal, it's not their goal, one of our five goals, all the goals are interconnected, and we are moving staff in that positive direction, we're doing everything we can, but I think this is a big step in the right direction for Cedar Grove Public Schools to have very specific delineated goals that'll be connected between not only the district goals, but also the buildings, to have a clear-cut direction on where we want to go. Thank you, Ms. Dora.
Thank you, Mr. Palaik. All right, goal number two is fiscal?
That's me.
That's you. You're our money man.
So the goal reads, "To establish a fiscally responsible budget to support short and long-term program and facility needs and goals." And to me, this means prioritizing budget decisions and, you know, making sure that they're aligned with our strategic initiatives and our strategic goals, I think that's important. And an example of this is appropriately allocating the district's budget to make sure that there's a reasonable balance between, you know, money that's spent on overhead versus, for example, classroom instruction, right, those types of spends. I think for any more significant decisions, I think it also means making sure that we're balancing the interests of all stakeholders, you know, whether that's our students, whether it's parents or taxpayers, and those are just some of the obvious ones. But while doing this, I think it's also important to incorporate, like I mentioned earlier, general economic factors into those considerations. I think that's especially important, especially during these, you know, these uncertain economic times. And the goal should be to try to understand and project to the best of our ability not only the uses of our district's funds, but the sources and the timing of those funds as well, I think that's critical. And then lastly, I think it's also important to note that the Board of Ed is not only focused on what's happening in the immediate here and now, but we're also taking a mid-to-longer term view as well, and so that means appropriately balancing the needs of today, but making smart investments that are gonna benefit the school district into the future as well.
Thank you. Goal number three, accountability.
Goal for accountability reads, "Enhance accountability among stakeholders for successful teaching, learning, and consistent growth throughout the school community." This includes looking at, making sure the hiring and retention of faculty and staff follows a consistent process that's held with high standards, and that evaluations are done properly and thoroughly, including the evaluations of all administrative staff. By holding the administrative staff to high expectations and supporting them to grow their leadership, their leadership abilities, they're gonna have a stronger impact on those whom they lead. This level of accountability will continue throughout all faculty, staff, students, and the larger school community, ensuring the growth of all stakeholders throughout the district, especially students, as Paul talked about. The accountability starts with the BOE, to ensure that we first are holding ourselves to high standards, that we act with integrity, and we're committed to all of the goals we're speaking about tonight. In doing that, we're also gonna build more trust among the community.
Thank you, Mrs. Gigan. Okay, goal number four is special education, which is the goal that I'm gonna speak on tonight. So the goal reads, "To facilitate a district-wide special education audit and communicate the results to all constituents. Special education is instruction that is specifically designed to meet the unique needs of a child with a disability. This means that the education is individually developed to address the specific child's needs that result from that disability. There's no one-size-fits-all approach to special ed. An instruction should be tailored to meet the needs of each student. With that being said, this board is committed to ensuring that a continuum of services are provided to meet the individual needs of students requiring our special education services. The district is actively conducting an audit to assess the current programs being offered and the need for any additional programs either in the immediate, immediately or in the near future. This process was started with our interim director, Mrs. Suzie Wright, and now being continued with our newly-appointed director of special services, Mrs. Jessica Pigmatello. In the very short time that these women have been auditing our program, they've identified several issues regarding certifications and have made the necessary adjustments. As the audit continues, the Board of Ed will continue to support the department as these changes are needed and made. These changes may include adding additional programs and/or restructuring the existing ones that we currently have. In addition, as this process unfolds, the board will communicate the findings to all the stakeholders." And our final goal is under communication. Go right into Mr. Marzullo.
Thank you. Communication, to strengthening communications with all stakeholders. This board is committed to improving and strengthening the communication with all stakeholders. The board relies on the support of the community, and we believe in communicating effectively will improve the trust and the collaboration between stakeholders and the board, which act as a basis for good decision-making. The board is committed to earning and keeping the trust of the community by being transparent. We are focused on disseminating accurate information to the community through a variety of outlets and communication tools, such as the implementation of our new board docs, continuing broadcasting our board meetings, email, updating websites on a regular basis, and the development of social media outlets. Presenting our goals this evening is yet another example of sharing the direction and vision we have. It is our promise to communicate, listen, reflect, and be impartial, so we can serve as a conduit between the schools and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marzullo. So those board goals, you will be able to find on the website, and in, as Mr. Marzullo spoke about, we are in the process of creating a board social media page, which will be for information purposes only, and we are also currently working on expanding our board goals, each goal with an action plan on how we are, you know, gonna be fulfilling that goal, and it will be continuously updated as things are accomplished. So it's just a more thorough way for us to have accountability for our own actions and be able to share it with the community and to rebuild that relationship. and to rebuild that relationship between home and school. And we all know that without that, progress does not happen. So we are certainly committed to that. Okay, so at this point, we're going to move into, we have some board presentations tonight. Our first one is the STEM program. Let's take them on up. I'm excited for this. Yes, absolutely.
Good evening, Nick DeCort, principal at the middle school. I just wanted to thank Superintendent Rosso, President Dora, our Board of Education members for having us this evening. The last time we were here, we had an opportunity to showcase our students' theatrical ability. If you remember, all of the students that we had show up and do the presentation of Frozen. Tonight, we're going to shift gears a little bit and talk about our STEM program. Now, thinking way back when we first purchased our, our very first printer here, probably seven years ago, nine years ago, I remember tasking Mr. Lugameno here with, "Look, ornaments are great, keychains are great, but we want to solve real problems. So how are we going to present that to our kids and to have them think outside the box and be active problem solvers?" So he came up with the idea of using the engineering and design process through 3D printing to be able to solve these problems. So I'm going to turn it over to him, but before I do, I don't want them to get angry, but I just want to thank the Savia family very much for their generous donation. They donated two 3D pens to our program, which is going to help our students acknowledge. So thank you. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Lugameno and our students, because I know they're eager to show you what they've come up with, and I know you'll be super impressed, as I am.
Do I have to talk into that? I'm pretty loud.
Yes, the people at home. So the people at home.
But I'm really loud.
Yes.
The kids yell at me all the time.
I don't think they'll hear you at home.
All right, hello, I'm Mr. Lugameno, I'm a STEM teacher. I've been here for, I think, eleven years now. And Mr. DeCort, I am lucky to be in a school where we are on the cutting edge of technology. We've had 3D printers. We're on, I don't know how many different generations of 3D printers we're on. But the coolest part is the students and the ideas they come up with. I know Ms. Dora knows some amazing ideas that some of our students might have come up with in the past in the STEM room. And Ms. Dora stole something from me. She stole two words from me. That, like, I've been thinking about all day, like, what, what, what words would I say about the three students that came here? Or about students in general? And perseverance and resiliency. Because these students, Connor does have some experience with 3D printing, but for Alexa and Michael, this was their first time designing 3D and printing with 3D printers. And when you see what they created, and, and they're only with me for thirty-seven days. The cycle's about thirty-seven days. When you see what they created, you're going to see where the perseverance and resiliency and, like, Michael had a design that didn't work, didn't stop them. He just made it better. And that, that's what the engineering design process is. It's about finding a problem. Now, I don't come up with the problems for the students. The students come up, they're responsible for coming up with a real-world problem. In the past, we used to do, like, a whole project, and then they had, like, a week or two to try and come up with a solution. Now, we pretty much spend the entire cycle where the students identify a real-world problem and then try to come up with a solution where they can use a 3D printer to solve the problem. So just a little bit in the cycle, students are responsible for creating a website to document what they do throughout the cycle. They have to have a homepage, like all websites do, an invention page where they document their invention, how they came up with it, why they came up with it. They put their different designs, so you can actually see, here was the first design. And at first, they'll take screenshots on the 3D design software that we use. And then by then, they have their actual design on there. They take pictures. Throughout the cycle, we've been through a bunch of different designs. I let students vote on an extra credit project, and they come up with one. And so we work on that at some points. They have a page all about 3D printing, where they put image carousels of what's being 3D printed in the world. I think you're going to be surprised to hear some of those things. They put links to other websites where you can learn more. And then finally, students are required to reflect throughout this cycle on, you know, what did they do today? Was it a good day? Was it a bad day? Did they run into a problem? If they ran into a problem, how did they get through that problem? So I think, as a teacher, especially in seventh-grade STEM, resilience, like, that word and perseverance, so important. And then, like I said, they're responsible for solving a real-world problem. And I think you're going to see three pretty creative things. Now, I will say, Michael and Alexa just finished the cycle two and a half weeks ago. Connor just started two and a half weeks ago. So he's only two and a half weeks in, but he's still working on his design. But what he's brought into class with the 3D printing pens, I mean, we have lines at those of what students want to create. So that's been really cool and the way he's been teaching students about that. So I'm going to give it to the students. We have Michael, Alexa, and Connor. And they're going to tell you about what we do, what we learned about in there, and also about their designs. Oh, passion, that's the word, passion. That's why these three students are here, because of the passion they had for what they were creating. Awesome.
What is 3D printing? 3D printing is, we use Tinkercad to create the, the designs to make the 3D prints. And how we make it, we, we download a file, and then we pick a filament. So like, a filament is like a color. And we pick that color, and we put it into the, the MakerBot, and it puts the filament in, and it makes your design on the build plate.
Some current products that are being 3D printed today are houses, human organs, and prosthetics, which are much more affordable than regular prosthetics, food that includes desserts, pizza, and steak. How they do that is they replace the plastic filament with things like dough and sauce.
So what we have here is 3D pens. These are, these are new. We've just experienced these. I have three years of experience with them. They're, they're pretty simple to use. All you have to do is draw an outline, and then you use the 3D pen to trace it, and it becomes whatever you make. So I do have a few examples. What these are really good for is making things like keychains or accessories for things like backpacks. There's a lot of these keychains that we've made out of plast, like, simple plastics, like, three dollars' worth of material. And for one of the 3D printers, the doors we have on the 3D printer, we made a logo with it with the 3D pen. And they're also really good for fixing broken things. Like, I used to have glasses, and they broke a lot. So I used a 3D pen to fix the glasses. And, yeah, that's pretty much it.
I don't know, you forgot about mine. I made my first design with 3D printer. If any other day I made a frog, Connor would not show you. I think he'd be embarrassed by it.
Connor, you want to pass some of those up? And just so we could see those? That's awesome.
You want to get a little frog?
Give him Mr. Brown, thank you.
It makes sense now why my son came home and asked for a 3D pen. Thank you.
I have a feeling there were several students this week down at home that asked for a 3D printed pen, because they have been great for pretty good days.
I'm going to assume there's a hockey stick keychain up here, right, Michael?
I made a custom card stand. A 3D card stand is meant to display your baseball cards. This stand I made allows me to display any type of card, like a roll card, top loader, one-touch, and a slab. When I display my cards on the stand, I upload them to TikTok and eBay to sell them. And here are examples of them. This is one of my 3D designs that I made in STEM this year. This is my prototype, which failed.
But that was also not a fail, because we looked at why it failed, and he was able to make one that worked much better.
And this is one of the 3D printed ones that I bought. Simple, all you have to do is just display your cards on the stand like this. There's a ledge right on the bottom of it. That way, they can hold the card.
That's great.
Very impressive.
Better not pass them, we'll take the card.
You better keep the card.
We have the end when they're all done. We can get a picture of everybody, of their designs. Mr. DeCort, on the table. I'll take it, and we could put it on your, yeah.
So as an artist, I love to paint a lot. And I have gone through my fair share of brushes because of certain problems. One of my biggest problems is the paint getting stuck in the brush if it isn't cleaned correctly. And that could potentially ruin the next color you use. So say you're using a blue, right? And you don't clean the brush correctly. Say your next color is red, the blue can show up in your red paint. Another issue is having a lot of water stuck in the brush. That's also a big problem, because that can dilute the paint and make it very thin. And then another issue is not having anywhere to place your brushes. Putting them in the water can damage the bristles. And then leaving them on your workspace can cause a lot of clutter. So I made this, if you would like to take a look at it. So I created the painter's cup. It is a water cup with a textured bottom, a drying rack on the rim, and a wedge at the very top. So basically, all you have to do is take your brush. Once you're done with it, you press it on the bottom so that it takes all the paint out. And then the wedge, right there, if you drag the brush across the wedge, the water will come out, and it will go back into the cup. And then once you're done, you can put it in one of the racks, so then it's ready for it to be used again or to be stored. And this just makes maintaining your brushes really easy. So, yeah.
I was watching, taking a look at the detail of texturing at the bottom, whether it goes bigger, smaller. I was, when I saw that. And we do have to thank Mr. Koster. Mr. Koster helped us print that up, because he has a print record that was much longer than ours. So he was able, we were able to send it to Mr. Koster, and he got that printed for us. We have to thank him, but, yeah, that was very interesting as well.
I want to buy one.
I think every, I think every school in New Jersey is one.
You're going to have to patent that.
Yeah.
I could use some in my art room.
Good job.
So what I made is, I made these phone cases, because I know phone cases can be overly expensive for items made of plastic. And these, you could just customize them however you want. They do, however, these two did not print right. This would not help your phone if you drop it. I do have a design that works. We just didn't have time to print it.
Connor just started the cycle two and a half weeks ago. So we're not there yet. Will we pack some for it?
Failure is a big part of the learning curve.
I love failing. I love failing.
You want to fail, because that's how you continuously make.
Perseverance. I couldn't be more proud of these students. I couldn't be more proud of our seventh grade as a whole this year. Some of their inventions, I mean, our research, uh, fifty kids. There's been just some amazing inventions. And a big part of it is, we don't tell the students what they have to do. They come up with their own, own ideas and their own problems, and you can see the passion. Michael couldn't wait there. And, and I, I, that was a pretty tall task, because students really only have, by the time we get into it and we understand how, because they first, it takes a good two, three weeks just to understand how the program works. For Michael to then, all right, I'm going to build a design, and we print it, and it doesn't work. All right, let me come up with another one. Or, you know, for Alexa to come up with that such detail in that short amount of time. And Connor's already got templates, so he's going to be able to just make customs phone cases. Hopefully, I get one. But like, I mean, seven weeks may sound like a lot, but with the amount of time you really have in there, and it's like you said, first, we need some resilience, and then these students in our seventh grade, very proud.
Mr. DeCort, before you, everybody leaves, can we get a picture of?
As long as that's okay, yeah.
Is everybody, you guys okay with that? Which your, which your inventions?
If I can just point out one last aspect to this and just take perseverance, that word, just a little deeper. Right now, we're in an age of instant gratification, right? Who's swiping which way, left, right, and what have you? Who's watching what iPad? These kids didn't wait for the problem to come to them. They found the problem, and then they found the solution and/or are getting to the solution and using failure to get back on the horse and move forward. And this is just in seventh grade. So what are they going to do? I'll leave you with this question. What are they going to do in high school? Just something to think about.
Our future engineers.
Sounds spectacular. Good job, guys.
With their inventions?
Yeah, come on.
You want to take a picture? Do you want to take the picture? Mr. DeCort, you want to be with your students? So if you guys want to hold your inventions? Take a look at Mr. Lugameno? You can hold your frog, Mr. Lugameno.
You'll hold the frog?
No, you can.
I don't want to hold a frog.
Oh, I didn't know we were going to be in it. I didn't realize. I didn't realize we were going to be in it. I meant just then.
Okay, they're, they're being it.
That's okay.
No, that's good, that's good.
Yeah, no, the students, the students.
Yeah.
I'm going to hold my frog. I'm proud of the frog.
Can you close up a glass problem? I'm sorry, frog. Well done. That's terrible. I'm not judging. It's not terrible. I've seen worse. I've done worse. Before everybody leaves, I do want to also thank the Savia family for your donation. We really do appreciate that. I'm sure the students are going to love. And I'm sure that we, a pen will end up in my house soon. Thank you for that. Everybody's holiday list. All right, we're going to move on. Mr. Paddock can I step out for a minute? He will be returning shortly, but just going to give him a few minutes, because we got to vote, so we got to wait for him to return. Actually, I'm going to start with my update. Yeah, I'll start with my update, and then we'll get to you. Yeah, mine's a little bit longer, but I want to talk about a couple things. Okay. Can we maybe move this to the side now that? Just because it's.
Right near line of sight?
It's right in the middle and. Thank you, Mr. DeVita. Okay, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna, I would like to talk a little bit, um, about a few things and, um, give my board president update. We presented our goals tonight, so that was the first thing I wanted to talk about. So I hope everybody here and the people at home had an opportunity to, um, kind of hear them and digest them. And we will continue to re, they will resurface as we move forward, as we make, um, updates and, uh, changes. I wanted to talk a little bit about some board training that occurred. This past weekend, Mr. Palick and Mrs. Keegan attended a, a weekend-long, um, new board member training in Princeton. It was grueling, it was really intensive. It is part of the mandated training for all board members. Mr. Grande will be completing his soon, in the near future, as well as the, uh, part two of the training for Mr. Marzullo and myself. So we will be attending those trainings as well. Tonight, in the resolutions, you will see the tentative budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Potentially will be some discussions around that. Oct, um, April twenty-fifth, Mr. DeVita, will be the presentation, the public presentation.
Yes.
At the board meeting on April twenty-fifth, there will be the public presentation of the, um, budget with a little, uh, much more detail. I want to talk about the referendum, alright? And our, in potential referendum in our, um, referendum meeting that we had a week ago. So last week, we heard from the ad hoc committee and they presented to the board, as well as the community, a plan that they felt would address the needs of our district. I want to start by thanking each of those board members for all the time and the effort that they put into that project. The board has considered their recommendation and we'd just like to make some comments about it. First, it's important that the community understands what the specific needs we are trying to address. The needs include our aging facilities and the lack of facility space for enhanced programming. Yes, we have experienced a growth in our population within our elementary schools, specifically South End, with North End following right behind. However, what is really driving our class sizes up now and will continue to drive them up is the need for more programming options. Programs such as special education programs, small group instructional needs, enrichment needs. These mandated programs require classroom space. And many come with limitations, size limitations. This has created a significant need for more space at our elementary schools. Now, there's two ways to get that. You either move students out of the elementary schools, which would require LRP, or you build additional classroom space on the current facilities. There's pros and cons to both options. Now, to give a very quick summary, simplistic view of what the committee's recommendation was, they talked about reopening LRP with an addition. They talked about upgrading all of our HVAC systems to include air conditioning. They talked about replacing or re, um, repairing roofs at all of our buildings. They talked about building additions onto some of our existing elementary, uh, on the existing elementary schools, just to name some of them. Would this plan address our needs? Absolutely. The committee did exactly what they were tasked to do. They put together, together a proposal that would address our needs and sustain us for some time. But that comes with a very large price tag. We would be looking at a referendum estimated to be approximately eighty million dollars, with about fifteen to twenty million, give or take, of that coming from infrastructure upgrades alone. So what's happening now, right? That's what everybody wants to know. The board is working with the administration to prioritize some of the infrastructure needs to determine what needs need to be done now and what needs can be done in a strategic five-year plan. We are looking at alternative ways to bring air conditioning into our classrooms without ripping out our existing systems. We're looking at cost-effective ways to reopen LRP and utilize it in a manner that will best address our need for more facility space now at the elementary schools. These issues cannot be addressed in a one-shot, as we all might have wanted them to be. The cost would just be too great for this community. We recognize that something needs to be done, but on a smaller scale. Mr. Grosso, the board, the administration are working to create a modified plan that will hope, that we hope will be more amenable to the community and will take into account the fiscal constraints that many of us are now facing. We will continue to hold public sessions to ensure that the community remains informed. So I just wanted to kind of put that out there as a follow-up to, um, last week's meeting. And I will open that up for discussion for anyone that wants to, um, add anything. We're good? I think you covered it all. So we will, we're gonna continue to work on coming up with a plan that's gonna meet those needs, but with the fiscal responsibility. Again, I want to thank the, the ad hoc committee for all their time and their effort. It was a very difficult endeavor. I think originally we wanted to, we were hoping that we could do this in a one-shot deal. But we're really looking at a lot of infrastructure, um, situations within our buildings that need to be addressed. And, um, you know, so there, there's an onus on our fiscal responsibility. So, um, we will continue to work on that and we will continue to provide updates. But we do recognize that there is a need for some action and, um, we're prepared to hopefully move in that direction soon. So that is, um, what I have for my update. Mr. Grosso?
I have a short, I have a short one. I just want to echo everybody's sentiments about the prom. I had the opportunity to go, um, opening night and it was on a Thursday night. And for an opening night on a Thursday, the, the place was packed. It was unbelievable. And the students' performance and their depth of, of character and their, quite frankly, their abilities were phenomenal. So, um, we were very fortunate to have a staff that invests their time and efforts and energy into providing these types of productions for our community and for experiences for our kids. And we're also very lucky to have the talent pool that we have here in our community, um, in the area of the arts. It's, it's phenomenal and, um, it was great. I, I thoroughly enjoyed it and I'm very proud to be part of that. And just to piggyback on the arts, um, it was, it was mentioned earlier tonight about the second annual District Arts Showcase. We started this for the first time last year. This is our second year and it's, it's going to be bigger and better than last year. Uh, that will take place at, on, um, the twenty-third of March at three PM. Uh, will there be more information coming out about that? Uh, but I encourage everybody to participate in it because it is literally pre-K through twelve. And it showcases the talents, the artistic abilities of all of our students here. And it's unbelievable the amount of students that have these abilities, so, uh, and these skills and talents. So please join, join us. And just as a last note, um, is that, uh, we did have a follow-up. I know I spoke last time about our, um, the Essex County pre-K expansion through the state. Mr. DeVita and myself, Ms. Picnattello were on that second meeting again. And this time it was more about the, the financials of the possibilities of that. And, um, it was interesting to hear the feedback from a lot of our, um, our adjoining districts and, and some of the concerns about space, financial stability. And it all does tie in with what we're talking about, you know, including the referendum and what the potential, um, outcome would be if the state does mandate that for all of us. So, um, more to follow, but I just wanted to share that with you and that we are constantly being updated and being part of that as we move forward with that conversation. And I, I just want to say that the kids tonight, this was, this was incredible. This is, this is, when we talk about building, this is what, this is what we're talking about. Couldn't be more proud of the students, the staff and Mr. DeCort for really having that vision and really just starting to build upon that. So this is big kudos to the families as well.
Yes, yes, well done. Okay, thank you, Mr. Grosso. Alright, so let's get to some business here. Under the Business Administrator's Report, can I have a motion? I'm gonna break this up a little bit. Can we go, uh, can I have a motion for items one through eight?
So move. Second.
Discussion? Uh, in, just in discussion, I just want to again, uh, put on record, I would like to thank the Savia family for the, that donation of the 3D pens. I was really, really appreciative of that. Roll call, please.
Mr. Grande?
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Palick?
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo?
Yes.
Mrs. Dora?
Yes. Okay, so now, can I have a motion for nine, ten and eleven?
So move. Second.
Okay, we're gonna open that up to discussion. So I want to answer Mr. Springer's question earlier on. So nine and ten are professional appointments. So these are associated with a potential opening of LRP. Okay, these are requirements of an access road that will be needed to, in order to access, uh, LRP if we do choose to open it. Okay? So the access, in order to put an access road, you have to file, um, for an application for the program. There's deadlines for that, it takes time. There are also, um, some talks about changing the criteria and the guidelines, the stipulations, that if there is no option to put an access road into LRP, then there is no use of LRP. Okay, let me finish. So the, what we're approving tonight is the, the engineering, correct? Thanks for just the engineering. And the architect to submit the application. It does not tie us into anything, because you're right, we have not made any decisions. And as I said in my report, no decisions have been made at this point. But in order to have the use of LRP at any point in any capacity, we would need to put in an access road. And in order to put in that access road, we need to file this application and it's time-sensitive.
And our understanding is, Ms. Dora, that the submission of, of plans must accompany the request for the road.
Correct.
In other words, you cannot request the road on its own. Also, a very important point to that is I understand it, and please correct me if I'm wrong, as I listened to the architect. We are in a, we're in a position to put the optimum situation into the plans, but can always pull everything back. We cannot give them a minimum plan and add to it at any point in time. So this is to put forth by the architects, the optimum plan with the road, just so we can have.
The option.
The option to have that road there. Because I don't think that anything that we would like to move forward with or could even propose would work without having that road. And that, and it's, it's two thousand twenty-three. Can't have people pulling out on the highway from, from LRP, especially when you have students involved.
So a way to, a way to, to view this is that this is a, and I didn't add up the numbers, fifty, sixty thousand dollar option premium that we're paying to, A, one that we can exercise in the future if we decide to move forward with using LRP. And B, to preserve the value of what we feel is a very valuable asset, being LRP. Even if we don't use it, it would enhance the sale value, rental value, that, that type of thing. Is that a fair way to, to think about this spend?
Yes, and there is an adjustment on the, the total dollar figure. Um, and you, you guys might need to help me on that. But I understand from the architect that there would be partial services at this point because it's just submitting the application.
And the submission, again, for our audience, the submission has to be made by a point in time in June. As the, they understand EPA regulations are going to change. And there will be new regulations that would then drive the conditions with that road, if I'm correct, right? Mike and Tony, is that correct?
Right.
And therefore, if you're going to be grandfathered in under the existing regulations right now that are more amenable to us at this point in time, um, we need to really move forward with that at the, at this juncture. So that the parties involved here have ample time to do the work they need to do.
Okay, so that is, uh, nine and ten and eleven, right? We were doing nine through eleven, is the asbestos. Maybe Mike or, or Tony, you can help us out, talk a little bit about that. It's the asbestos for the boiler.
Yeah, this is, in, uh, the high school, we're, um. We, um, submitted a grant through the Energy Saver Program with PSCNG. So we're, we're gonna be getting new, um, boilers. Um, and, um, this part is just to, um, the existing boilers have asbestos in them. Uh, so we have to remove the, the asbestos in order for the, the project to begin. Uh, so this is just the, the beginning stages of, uh, the, um, architect, the, um, our, um, Bateman contractor, or consultant to, um, monitor, uh, removing it. But we're still gonna have to bid that work. Um, and then, um, it, it's all timing in, um, uh, doing the asbestos work and then, um, having the contractor put, put the work in after school ends. Uh, just with the sensitive nature of asbestos in the school. Um, you know, we don't want to do it while our children are in the building. Uh, we are allowed to do certain areas, but I mean, our, our stance is that we don't want to do it, um, with any children in the building at all. Uh, so this is just the, the first stages to, to begin that process.
And I think it's important to note that originally the boiler replacement was included in the talks of the referendum. And so that was one of the things that we looked at on how we could, um, address some of these areas of need in a, a different capacity. And so, uh, Mr. DeVita, uh, worked with the PSC and I'm sure Mr. Bannon as well.
Yeah, Bannon.
And Mr. Grosso. Worked with PSCNG to, um, take advantage of some of the programs that they're offering and we are getting substantial amount of money in return back for the boiler replacement. So, um, thank you for your work there.
Sorry, Dawn, I, I do, I don't mean, I don't mean to go back, but I just, I do have another question on the LRP. By submitting those plans, how long do we have until those plans that get submitted get crystallized before we need to make a decision and move, move forward with in one way or another? Do we know the answer?
Yep, we do. So, uh, we, once you file the application and it's accepted, you have, um, five years.
To make changes.
Yes. After that five years, it expires.
Let me make sure I understand your question, make changes to what?
As Paul mentioned, if we wanted to. We're going in.
Scale back or?
But if we want to scale it back.
So the way that.
When is that gonna crystallize? You're saying about the five years.
The way I understood it from the architect is that you put the worst-case scenario, the largest, um, addition, and once you're approved with that, you can reduce that with no change to the application. It would remain in effect. In five years, the application expires, regardless of you do exactly what's on it or not. So we have a five-year window, um, but you can go smaller, you just can't go bigger without filing a new application.
That's right, thank you.
Okay, so can we have a roll call on that?
Mr. Grande?
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan?
Yes.
Mr. Palick?
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo?
Yes.
Mrs. Dora?
Yes. And, I get my bearings here. Can I have a motion? Can I have a motion for G12 and 12, and 13?
So move.
Yeah.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grandi.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes.
Just to reemphasize, knowing this is a tentative submission to the county office.
For the, yes, as Mr. Pallack just said, we just, for the budget, it is a tentative submission, and the final submission, the final budget will be reviewed on the April 25th board meeting. Thank you, Mr. Pallack. All right, under H Superintendent Report, can I have a motion on one, H1? Two, three, one, through H4?
So move. Second.
Discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Grandi.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes, but abstain from H1.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Under I Superintendent Report, Human Resources, can I have a motion for I1 through I8?
So move.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grandi.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. Under J, under Superintendent Report for Special Services, a motion for J1, please.
So move.
Second. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Grandi.
Yes.
Mrs. Keegan.
Yes.
Mr. Pallack.
Yes.
Mr. Marzullo.
Yes.
Mrs. Dora.
Yes. At this point, the meeting is open to the public for comments on or off the agenda. Same rules that I spoke about earlier are still in effect, please.
Stephen Young, 18 Young Avenue, Cedar Grove. I'm a member of the Cedar Grove Historical Society, I'm on the Board of Trustees, and I want to reach out to juniors and seniors at Memorial High School, Morgan's Farm, we're going to be farming this year. And we're coming up with a program where if students get involved, that so many hours they put in, we're working out, they'll, we're going to award college scholarships.
Wow, that's fantastic.
Right now, they're around $500 each for a scholarship. And the program, they'll be learning how to pull weeds. Farming's not an easy thing. My grandfather, father, and great-grandfather attested to that, because they built houses on Young Avenue. So, they won't be handling any pesticides or herbicides, no power tools, anything. They'll be supervised by me or other trustee members. And it will be after school, or, you know, weekends, just, you know, learning implements tools, transplanting seedlings and plants, harvesting, picking, and just working around the farm, working up in the, where we sell everything. So, I'd like to know how or who in contact and start a program up at the high school.
It's interesting that you bring that up, because it's something that Mr. Gross and I have spoken about in the past, you know, when I first came on the board, we talked about that. We also have the internship
I was just going to bring that up.
...program that we run for our seniors, and I'm thinking that that's something that...
Well, if you don't mind me jumping in, but, Mr. Young, what you're making me think about right now is we do, we have an internship program that starts for our seniors in May, and what that does, it allows them to not have to even work on weekends or evenings or afternoons, they could possibly work that whole day. And they earn credit towards that. But if, this is something we could definitely work out, because I think it is a phenomenal experience, you're giving back to the community, it's a skill set that you carry for the rest of your life, even if you're not going to be a farmer, but you want to have a garden in your home, and just, just in general. So, what I'll do is, I believe I have your card, because...
I'll give you another one.
If you give me another one, and what I'll do is, I'll have the high school reach out to you, and maybe we'll sit down and we'll connect.
Great.
Because this is the time that we would want to do this right now, because it's March, and our students are now getting into the, what they want to do for an internship. And I could see that this could be something that some of our students would possibly be very interested in.
Right, great, great. All right, thank you.
This is a great opportunity.
Anybody else that would like to speak?
Leo Stringer for Highview Terrace, Cedar Grove. I just have a couple of comments, and this came up during a meeting. Mr. Pallack, thank you for your explanation of the education in especially AP classes, and moving kids up at different levels was one of the best explanations I've heard, especially recently. It's showing that all kids can't, aren't going to be GPA 4.5, so kids are at different levels, and they can excel at different levels. So, thank you. Also, I like the agenda for the board, the new website, actually, I like it. It's showing us more, it is making it more accessible, I do agree with that. And I see that the minister, even ministers are showing up or almost caught up, which is, which is good. So, we do, are seeing a visibility. So, thank you. Okay, I'm just going to continue my question earlier on the LRP, on the LRP proposal, taking a look at what they're looking at. I'm sure this has been done, but I just wanted to verify, the previous studies that have been done for the access road. I know people that lived on Robin Lane, which is behind, goes behind LRP. Before they opened Panther Park, they did studies, and I believe the answer was they could not put an access road through there. So, has that been addressed? They're building off of that?
Let me clarify the access road. What's that?
I was going to look at Tony, because he explained that to us as well.
The access road is through Panther Park.
Correct.
We will not be using Robin Lane, because I believe Robin Lane is not even an official road.
Yeah, I'm, so I've had conversations with the township manager, and it was interesting that Robin is not a road, officially a road. But what, just to give you some clarity and some background to the thought process that went into this, is that we started looking at this around, a conversation actually started happening around eight years ago, and around two and a half to three years ago, we really started to narrow down some ideas, and utilizing LRP was obviously one of those ideas. What we did was we brought in the previous township manager, Mr. Tucci, and we also brought in the previous chief of police, Mr. Sarasa, Chief Sarasa. And we looked at possibilities, and, you know, when you're looking at a piece of property that sits on a main artery that Mr. Pallack was talking about, is, it brought up major concerns for students and for families that are moving in and out of there. That road is very active throughout multiple points of the day. So, one of the suggestions from the township that helped put everybody on board for safety was to build an access road and not to bleed off of an already established road. And that was utilization of property that was in the back of LRP, where Panther Park 2, Panther, yeah, Panther Park 2, or the field is there now. So, there would be a road, an access road, that would service two-way traffic, but would connect from the existing parking lot all the way into a roundabout or circle in the back of the property. So, it does provide ease of access, and it does eliminate the issue of traffic on Pompton. So, the reason why the board is talking about, and the reason why they passed that resolution tonight for the architect, as well as the surveyors, was based on the need of Department of Environmental Protection, because you're dealing with Peckman, right? The river right there, so when you displace...
Yeah, that's swampy back there.
Right, so when you displace land, there's formulas, and so, this is what allows us to do this. You just can't build something, you have to replace property. So, that's what that is. And so, it doesn't necessarily attach to an existing road, it would be a brand-new access road.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I thought they had tried that when they built Panther Park and Panther Park 2, this football stadium, I thought it was shot down then. Okay, thanks for explaining it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
John Martinelli, 30 Hillside Avenue, Cedar Grove. Good evening. You're going to have to bear with me, only because I've got my glasses, I borrow yours maybe, but I'm going to read slow, and if I trip up, it's only because I can't see the words. All right. All right. I would like to preface this issue, I have one that is very controversial. I have addressed this with the middle school principal, and I was given a very generic response due to the state mandates, but he was very sensitive and accommodating, I think nothing but the best for Mr. Decourt. Recently, my daughter, a student at Memorial Middle School, was in the girls' bathroom. A biological male entered and used the same facility. I pride myself in the fact that I am raising my daughter with modesty, self-respect, and innocence. I am also raising my children to be accepting, compassionate, and inclusive. This does not mean that I want to consent to my pubescent daughters sharing a bathroom with a biological male. As we all know, a bathroom is a private place, a place where the most personal things may happen. This was evasive, embarrassing, and not inclusive for my daughter and any other girls that I shared a bathroom. She came home and expressed how intrusive, uncomfortable, and confused she was. What a major, what my major concern here is, begins with my daughter's feelings, my son's feelings, and any other parent's feelings, student's feelings, which may occur. We pour thousands, almost millions of dollars into mental health services. We have paid high mental health administrators, consultants, and services, yet where is the support for children like my daughter? Sadly, I was told that since my daughter was uncomfortable, she may have an option to use the nurse's bathroom in the nurse's office. How is this okay? You have 350 girls. I am seeking answers. My first question is this, how is this okay? Why is this okay that my daughter must switch her biological bathroom? My second question is, due to the events that have transpired within the district, such as the incident and the aftercare at North End where children were violated? Board, are you concerned that the bathrooms shared for various sexes are potentially introduced issues? My third question is, when will there be a gender-neutral bathroom be installed, since we're on the thing with the new referendum? Might as well put a little money aside, so everybody feels comfortable, right? And nobody feels slighted. The preference to feel comfortable. I'm sorry if I'm messing this up, because I can't see. But my fourth question is, I know that there is members on this board that agree with me on these issues, but I'm not going to single them out. As a board, what are we going to do with parents that feel safe, comfortable, and private in their most personal space? Girls might do it, but it's only 10 years old. 10, 11, 12, as they get a little older in that area, they're starting to get, which I don't, you know, the girl things that happen around that age. So, you know, like I said, this is pretty much what I wanted to bring to you guys, because it's affecting my daughter, and I know personally, it's affecting other girls. And I just want to know which way we're going to go with this. Like, in other words, I understand the mandate, I get it, but mandates don't make it necessarily right either. You know what I mean? As a parent, and many other parents that share my view, where is our rights? And that's what I have to say.
Okay, well, I appreciate your comments, and I can appreciate the emotions behind that. But as you said, mandates, and I'm not downplaying that, please don't misunderstand, mandates are, we are held to mandates. But you bring up some valuable points that I think that is, warrants some further conversations. And, Mr. Gross, if you want to speak to any of that, the specifics, I know the principal, you said the principal addressed it, you know, as much as he could.
But yeah, the same as you have, I'm not getting it. These are my children. And we all know what's right and wrong, nobody wants to hurt other people or that. But I feel like many of the girls at the school, since it does say girls' bathroom, like what about if I wake up tomorrow, and all of a sudden I feel like a woman 10 years old, and I use your bathroom? You know what I'm trying to say? I'm just trying to bring this to light.
Mr. Martinelli, I understand where you're coming from. I understand where you're coming from, and I don't have an answer for you right, I'm not even going to pretend to have an answer for you right now, right? Because it's, I don't, I don't have any answer.
So, say this new referendum, can we put in where we have gender neutral?
So, I will, I can speak to that, because we have done that in the high school. So, that certainly is something
We've looked to do that here as well.
I was just going to say that, like, what are our options there? But you bring up a valuable, valuable point. We have done that in the high school, already.
Okay, and in the interim, since there's nobody in the bathroom monitoring that, I would be questioning that we have a woman monitor in the girls' bathroom.
Well, I certainly will take your request, and we'll have to warrant further conversation. I can't tell you that we can do that or not at this point, okay?
I appreciate it.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Okay, so...
Hello, Michael Palamara. I'd like to comment on the referendum, that I support referendum. When I saw the referendum, I can see why you would want to take it back and restructure it. You know, we are either at or over capacity, you know, which unfortunately, unfortunately means we're kind of late, right? So, I hope to see new referendums in the next couple of months. Is there any chance we'll have it by the end of this new quarter?
I can tell you, we are actively working on it.
Okay.
As quickly as we can, without being hasted, acting in haste.
Sure. I completely understand, you know. You know, it's just, we have, new homes and apartments are going to be coming online very, very shortly, and I understand there's more on the way. So, if we don't move now, you know, we'll probably be in a bad situation in five to 10 years.
We certainly appreciate your support.
Sure.
And when we get to the point of the referendum and presenting it, we're going to probably lean on you to help with that, and any other community members.
What do you call it?
Because this is a community project.
Then, what do you call it? Then I volunteer.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Call me when you need me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to close that portion of the meeting. Announcement of future meetings, our next meeting is March 14th, and it is at the high school. 6:30 closed session, 7:30 public session.
April 25th?
And then April 25th. Wait, did I miss, I'm sorry, I misread it. I'm still getting used to the board doc. Today's the 14th. Why didn't you tell me that? You're sitting right next to me. Let's start that over. Future meetings, April 25th, 6:30, and it is at the high school. And then, the following one after that is May 9th. Same time, 6:30 closed, 7:30 regular meeting. All right, can I have a motion to adjourn? Still in favor?
So move.
So move. So move. Meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone, thank you for coming, get home safe.